Good morning. I will call the commission meeting Thursday, November 21st to order. May I have said, Terry, please call the robe?
Western Commissioner Hosee Blue.
Present.
Eastern Commissioner Marla Jackson.
Present.
Presiding Commissioner Lynn Morris.
Present. Do you all join me with a pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. A good way to start out today, we have got a lot of interesting things on our agenda today. So I appreciate everyone being here. As always, I try to remember to say that we are live on YouTube right now. So everybody smile if the camera looks at you. And also, if they can't watch it live, because we understand a lot of people are working at this time, they can watch it 24 hours a day. And they can watch it more than once if they want to. And so also, I want to make a mention that the budget that Ms. Dent did, that's a lot of work. Our county budget for 2025 is in that booklet. There's 484 pages. And there's lots of graphs and charts and things like that. I had a lady yesterday, I went over part of the budget with her. And it's open for the public to come and see. It's also on our website. And as our financial portal is there every day, you can see every dollar spent and every dollar coming in. You can also see that entire budget. And then you can ask Commissioners or ask Ms. Dent, the expert on the budget, what it is. So today, we need to approve the consent agenda. And we do have one financial. And it's CART funds and distribution, Common 1, Common 2, and all the different special road districts. Money that's been distributed. And so total distributed is $207,435.85. So that's total distributed. So that's the CART funds. We do have some agenda minutes that we need to approve today. And that is 10:31 is regular session, 11:14 is regular session, and 11:19 is regular session. And no other financials or things like that. And I think we'll keep the entire order just as it's on the budget, on the agenda. So I would need a motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
So moved.
Second that motion, sir.
Okay, we've got a motion second. Thank you all. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. So we will start right now with County Clerk Ms. Paula. We're going to talk about the election that we just had.
Good morning.
Good morning, Paula.
Um, yeah. I'm just here to get the election results and the minutes for future reference. We did certify the election on November 12th. We had a 75% turnout. We have 68,000 registered voters. We had about 51,000 votes, so that's 75% turnout. In 2020, we had a 75.42% turnout. So we're pretty close to the same. Roughly 25% of those people voted absentee. Absentee voting started September 24th. No excuse in person. Absentee voting started October 22nd. And on that day forward, we were swamped in our office all the time. And that, because of that, I had to open a second location next to four, no in-person voting. We just worked, I'll tell you about my staff. My staff's an amazing staff. We come in at 5:30. We didn't leave till about 6:30. From 8 to 4:30, we voted, everyone was all hands on deck, voting people coming into the office on Election Day. This is from the IT department. We had on Election Day, 2,278 phone calls come into our office. And that was roughly about 70 hours is what Bill told us. 70 hours, 40 minutes and 21 seconds is what that equaled to be. So we got through it. We all done great. And like I said, my staff is amazing. And I couldn't have done it without them. Any questions, concerns?
Very good. Any comments or questions, Ms. Paula? Not from me, sir.
The only thing I might give you an opportunity to clarify, there's been a little bit of bad press. I want to give you the opportunity to kind of tell us what happened and why. I know that they're trying to paint you in a bad light in certain areas. I want you to give an opportunity to get that explanation since we're being recorded. That way people will know the truth.
Well, with having, we didn't expect the high volume of turnout in our office. And we only had so many machines. So we had to save some machines to make sure every polling location had machines. My choice, we did not report three absentee machines because we needed them for provisional ballots and our military ballots. Military has until Friday at noon to get their ballot into us per state statute. So we were getting close to our max on those machines. So I chose to keep those machines open to run those military and provisional ballots through. All ballots were counted. I just did not report those totals.
So to alleviate the issue in the future, having additional machines, because the machine will only take so many tabulations.
Correct.
So they only have a certain life expectancy. So in the future, we would need either more machines or maybe the...
More machines or we're going to get bigger TMs, our USB drives and stuff. If we have to, we'll have to lease more machines. But our vendor didn't have any more because other people were needing two. So there was no more machines to get. So I just made the call to leave those machines open. And we did have a representative from both the Republican Committee and the Democratic Committee. And they were fine with that. So I just wanted to...
Yeah, or the state legislature could change the law with regards to military votes coming in late. So there's several different things that could happen here. And nothing that you did was malice or anything like that. You just had to plan accordingly with what you had available.
Yes, and I am getting bad press, so but I will take it.
Now, that's why I wanted to give you...
It was mine. My decision.
That's why I wanted to give you the opportunity to put it out there as the truth of what happened. It was not something nefarious that was going on.
Correct. I know. They said that the ballots weren't counted. All those ballots were counted. I just did not report those results, the unofficial results that month. I waited until we certified.
Ms. Paula, and I'm glad Commissioner Jackson brought that up where we could clarify that. That's one of the perks I see in all the years that I've been an elected official. That you get some of this stuff from the press that, because it sounded like what I was hearing that night and even on the news the other night, I'm not going to say which station, but that we didn't count the ballots. What you did is you made a decision, the best decision that you thought, and you had both parties okay it. And it didn't affect any outcome of any election.
Correct.
The outcome is still what the outcome is. And the votes were counted.
Yes.
They just weren't reported as soon as we would like to.
Correct.
Okay? And that's what I think. But I also want to make a comment, because I kind of felt like, I want you to know how good I thought you all did. I thought your office did an awesome job. And I watched the ladies come down two at a time and go out to people's cars. And the people that couldn't come in, how good they were. I felt like the Walmart greeter in the wheelchair. I sat out there in my wheelchair. And because there were such long lines, I talked to so many people. And they were all in good moods. They all appreciated the job that we were doing. I didn't have anybody complain. And everyone seemed to be nice with each other. And so I honestly, and the security people, they did a great job. And that day that it was raining, they got the people in quicker. They were able to work together and get more people inside and lining up different places. And it was really good. So they didn't say that on TV.
No.
But I will tell you, watching, watching from my standpoint, they did, you guys did a good job.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. Very good. Well, we got that recorded now. So the next item on the agenda is EMA Director, Mr. Phil.
Did we vote on that or did we have to?
I don't think we have to vote on that.
Sometimes you sometimes don't, but you don't have to.
We're just recording it, I think. Okay, Mr. Phil, we've got, we've got a report. Third quarter report. We appreciate you doing that, too.
And let's hold that. Well, I should have turned this in last week, but I think it said, "All supporting documentation has been put in a week ahead of time." Is that what the email said?
We'll let you play.
I'm going to plead old age. If it works. It's a work for you all.
No comments, sir. Some of us are getting to that point. I already forgot what you said. Go ahead, Phil.
This is just a list of all the stuff we did. Third quarter wasn't really that memorable, I guess. I always am careful with the words I use because I don't want to jinx something. You know, you don't ever walk into a 911 office or an emergency room and say, "Boy, you used a cute word in here." Because they'll throw rocks at you. So I'm kind of hesitant to say that it wasn't eventful. We did a lot of meetings. Jamie did a lot of meetings. And we attend the Southwest Missouri Emergency Support Organization. We did it every quarter. And that's one of the requirements that we have for our Emergency Management Performance Grant. Down there at the bottom, you'll see, we closed out our last year of ENPG. ENPG is one of the oldest grants, I think is the oldest grant program in the federal government. It started in the 50s, I believe. They called it civil defense back then. So the ENPG pays us half of our staff's salary. It reimburses it. So it used to pay a little bit of our equipment, half, but they took that out. So it's all salary now. So half my salary, half hers, and half Cheryl's is reimbursed by the federal government. And with that, a couple strings attached. We have to do various exercises and attend so many quarterly meetings and regional meetings, Regional Homeland Security Overslate Committee. So we have to be careful when we make all those. If we don't make them, I think, we don't get kicked out of the program. They deduct, I think, 20% if we don't meet the requirements. And then next year, then they'll get real cranky and take away more. We kept up with the volunteer meetings. We had Ozark Fire come and do a class for us in August, our Citizens Corps, or CERT meeting. The National Weather Service, and Jamie knows more about this too than I do. The National Weather Service is trying to get this program going more, it's called Weather Ready Nation.
I think it's Storm Ready Supporters.
Storm Ready. But we met them at the library and we'd go over their storm procedures. You know, what they're going to do if it is a severe thunderstorm warning or tornado wash or the shelter areas and how they notify their staff and all that kind of stuff. And then the library gets a certificate.
If they meet certain requirements for these.
If they meet the requirement. So they're trying to do that with a lot more businesses and just collaborating with them on that.
We also met with the, it's the Ozark Little Theater. That's not what they're called, but...
Stained Glass Theater?
Yes.
Yeah. Did that one do.
That's where the State of the State for Ozark is going to happen on December 10th this year. Chamber of Commerce, Ozark Chamber of Commerce is having their State of the State function that night, same last year.
And Chamber of Commerce, those are, those are folks that we really need after a disaster. New magic seismic zone planning, that's been in the forefront more lately. And I'm not sure how much they've updated that plan. I haven't looked at it because it's very lengthy. But when they first started doing that plan, they wanted Christian County to be able to accept 20-some thousand people? I just kind of chuckled. I don't know if you guys have any idea where we put 20-some thousand people. I'll need your home address and your basement. I want you to fit in your basement. But that was in the plan. And I thought, there's no way. So I think they've finally figured out and realized that even if there's a major disaster, most everybody don't leave. They will sit on their pile of rubble and guard it and not want to go anywhere because that's their home, you know? They don't just pick up and leave and go across the state. So I'm just picking out a couple here that are probably more memorable. Jamie had a, this was her event. Remember Helen Hunt and the Twister movie years ago? Well, theirs was a new one. So us in Green County had a event at the Alamo when that movie first came out. So I'll let her.
Yeah, so we had a question and answer session after the movie. And so we had a full theater. Every seat was sold out in the theater we were in. Ahead of time, we had a table set up with information about CERT and disaster preparedness. So as folks were coming in to see any movie, they would be able to stop by our table and speak with us and get some additional information. And then we saw the movie. And then after the movie, we had a CERT volunteer, an emergency manager, myself, and the CERT leader over in Springfield, Green County, answer questions for the audience. So we answered about disaster preparedness, about the CERT program, about the science of disaster a little bit. And so it lasted, they kicked us out of the theater. People kept asking questions until they asked us to leave. So I think it was a relatively successful event. And it was super exciting. It was the first of that kind that I had done. And so it was, it was very enjoyable.
Jamie, so I think that's a great thing. And the more things that we do, the better it is for the public. But what about the family-owned theater here in Christian County? Did we try to?
Yes. Yeah. I tried to get in contact here in Ozark, the B&amp;B Theater, and was unsuccessful at being able to partner with them. And so hopefully in the future, that's something that we're able to do. But the Alamo has dedicated staff who are able to work on those types of programs.
And I'm not, nothing negative toward you guys. But next time that we're doing something like that, be sure and let us know. There are some of us that really know the owners of the theater, the family-owned theater.
Sure.
And really, we need that down in Christian County.
Sure, yeah.
And I'd love to see that next year before the tornado season starts.
Sure, yeah.
And I'll help you. I think we really can get the family to okay that.
Okay, all right. That'd be wonderful.
So let's just put that on our calendar that we're going to do that. And we'll watch for the minutes. That that's something, a project that we'd like to do.
Okay.
For Christian County.
Yeah, absolutely.
We had our annual Disaster Animal Response Team Walk at OTC. They raised $2,500. You've heard me say it before. We have a disaster, you're better off being a dog in Christian County than you are a human. You'll be better taken care of. And all, we have, I bought that big truck, and all of our equipment went in there. So that freed up a trailer. And so it's like a 22, 24-foot car haul, hauler. Put all the animal response stuff in there. Then that freed up a little trailer. I'm going to try to sell it and get rid of it because I'm tired of trailers.
I know, I know the really good purchasing agent that would help you sell it.
Yeah. Maintenance is terrible. So this trailer is, has all that stuff in there. And almost, well, every item in there was bought with private donations. Nothing in there was spent, we spent government money on.
That's good.
Jamie went to the Nixon Citizens Police Academy. Did they tase you in that?
They offered to tase me.
I would have been really upset if I didn't get a video of that. Cybersecurity Personnel, the EFC, she went to that class. And I believe she has all the training now that she has to have. There's, to get that ENPG grant, you have to have lots of training. And so she is completely compliant now.
I believe so, yes.
Very good.
That cost us like $8 million sitting around all that training. It's a lot, but she's got it done. She and, and we had a few volunteers go the damage assessment class and rapid aid assessment class and Monette. Down at the bottom, Jamie got a medical reserve corps grant. And that was some of that contract thing we talked about yesterday, trying to get somebody hired for a short time. But nobody wants any money, I guess. I don't know. It's not a bad gig. Three or four days a week, make money. Best boss in the world.
They reported to Jamie? Oh, I'm sorry.
It was a little slow, but I was expecting it. Closed out last year's ENPG grant, ECPR was...
Emergency Community...
Preparedness.
And Response.
And Response, I think.
Yeah.
That funded a lot of our CERT stuff. Then we had $11,000 for CERT through the Regional Homeland Security and $15,000 to maintain the ID tag system we have. Any questions?
No, sir.
Well, it was a little lengthy for me.
I'm going to make one other point, too, because we got the public watching on YouTube. We've got a good group here. I want to make sure that people know. So in one quarter, this is July, August, and September, we, you have over 100, almost $150,000 in grants. That's in three months. I would bet you that you probably hit closer to half a million dollars in 12 months. And the reason I point that out is because a lot of different departments, the Sheriff's Department, you, a lot of different departments get grants. If we didn't get grants in this county, we would not be able to provide the services that we provide. So I always want to congratulate and brag about any department that gets grants in. They're not easy. You still have to apply for them. You have to know how to fill them out. There's techniques and secrets of making sure yours gets pulled and chosen and stuff like that. Because other people are competing too. Not everybody gets them. And so good job for that. And Jamie will have your grant contract back from our attorney today. And I'll get that signed today and get that for you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anything else that we got?
No.
Okay, good job. We'll see you again for your next quarter. We're going to make sure every department head does these quarterly reports. And because I think it's very educational, and people need to know what you guys are doing out there every day. I appreciate that.
Make sure you get it submitted a week in advance if you don't want to.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Have a good day. And Jamie, I'll call you when Mr. Austin gives us the contract.
Thank you.
Okay. Now we've got, I think now we've got a person, Ms. Kim is going to do it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, yes, we have a full schedule here. So the first one we're going to do is for the renewal of RFP 2023-22, General Carpentry and Electrical Services. This is the first contract renewal for the General Carpentry and Electrical Services for Hambi Construction. We bid this out last year. They do a good job for us. Mistress Teague, our maintenance supervisor, is satisfied with the quality of their work. I didn't know if you wanted to say a few words.
They really help us when we're in a bind and we need something fast. Or, for example, I've had peachback work and I've got four or five units down. And last year, Ted's unit went completely out. Instead of going through the bid process, which we would normally do, or doing an emergency purchase, we was able to use this contract to get that unit replaced within 48 hours, keeping his office up and running. With him being on the ground floor, it's, for security reasons, we really couldn't put a window unit in there as a temporary solution while we waited on the bid process either. They do handle cash. And of course, you've got that security issue. So this is just one example of why they're very, not inconvenient, but needed for this contract. And like I said, we've got great service out of them for several years now. And I would like to renew that.
Any comment or questions about that? I would just say in my four years here, that Hambi Construction, not only their attitude, their skill level, their, make sure that everything's cleaned up after they get, that they get done. So I really applaud those guys. And so I think it's a good choice. So I entertain a motion to approve this renewal.
Make that motion, sir.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it passes. Next one.
So this next one is, this is a Great River Engineering Agreement for the Justice Center Roof Repair. Christian County currently has a master contract agreement in place for Great River Engineering for professional engineering services. So under that agreement is when we can actually go into different projects. So this one, the project that you have with you is the Justice Center Roof. Due to the building's age and security issues, this is a very complex project. I sent you the agreement, but exhibit A at the bottom of page nine is where it goes into the scope of services. And that's where you want to review. This will give you a background for the project's detailed design phase and the construction phase. So once we do the construction phase, which is where we're getting ready to start, once they get, I'm sorry, once they get the design phase first done, then they will come back to you and then we'll start doing the construction phase. They'll do the bids for us, and then they'll bring back bids for you to review. I didn't know if there's anything you wanted to add.
And I do have John K. Hill here from Great River Engineering, if you have any technical questions that I can answer.
Okay.
We started noticing issues on the Justice Center and the jail roof, some flashing issues. We had some leaks. And when the wind's in the right direction, at just the right temperature, we seem to have these issues. We've got some drain issues. We had Hambi Construction, through them, they got ahold of the roofing company that come down and did an assessment. They recommended a full tear-off and give us a verbal estimate of exceeding $400,000. I talked with Ms. Kim. We discussed that. We decided it'd be better to bring in an engineer to double-check all that. We got ahold of Great River Engineering. They come out, they did a walkthrough on the roof and assessment. And from my understanding, the small sections that are buried throughout the entire roof can be repaired without spending that $400,000. And perhaps buy us another decade is the plan for a much less money. The $400,000, that's really something we need to plan for, not just say, hey, let's do this tomorrow and get it fixed. So with that being said, we are, we're looking at, hopefully, getting 10 years more use out of the overall roof and then planning accordingly in eight or nine years to budget for that full tear-off. Do you have any questions as far as that's concerned, what we need to do or what they... Do you have any questions as far as that's concerned, of what we need to do, or what that looks like?
Any comment or questions? No. I would just say, we got a Great River representative here today, and thank you very much, you and your company, because this is the kind of stuff that, you know, people, not knocking the other company, maybe they thought you needed a new roof, but a lot of difference between four hundred thousand dollars, and, and some repair work, I'm sure not gonna cost anywhere near four hundred thousand dollars, and like Mr. Richard said, we're gonna be able to keep a roof on for another ten years, maybe before we have to spend that kind of money, and, I don't know, we may get lucky and have, have a new building by then, too, I don't know what will happen, but, but that's the way to save money for our county, so I think that's a good choice. I take a motion to approve that.
One, one question, this, we're talking here about expenditures for the design phase, basically.
Right, that's correct, this is for the...
This is not what it's gonna cost us when we get to the end of this thing.
This is for the engineering, all, all the work they do, the follow-up, make sure it's done correctly, and then we'll, then we'll come back with the bid process.
I knew that was correct, I just didn't want anyone to read that and think, the twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars, man, we're home free, on that, so, okay, thank you.
All right.
And I do make a motion that we, that we approve this request with the Great River.
Okay, we've got a motion, thank you.
Second.
Got a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, moving on to our next one, who are the Ministry of Needles.
And John, you're welcome to stay, but you're also perfectly welcome to go, just in case you have any other work to do.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
So the next one is for ITV 2022.6, this is a contract renewal for the highway de-icing salts. This is a contract, is the second and final contract renewal, year three. Williams Diversified did not raise its prices for the upcoming renewal, the current price is eighty-seven fifty per ton, so we recommend you approve the contract renewal for Williams Diversified Materials.
All right, any comment or questions about that?
No. Just one question, probably more for the Highway Administrator. In the process of using the icing salt, are we mixing it with any other grit compound to lessen the amount of...
We do, so we mix it with, when we get our bills from capital, it's called ice controlled, it's essentially tiny little aggregate chips that we mix in with the salt. It's typically a fifty-fifty, but if it happens to be raining first, we increase that amount to more like a sixty-forty to the salt, to help keep traction on the roads since the salt dissolves in the rain.
Okay, perfect. So that, that impacts the, the cost per ton, basically, because you're diluting it, making it last longer?
Yeah.
And you're less wear and tear on the roads, because we're using the aggregate as well, so.
Absolutely.
That's the only question I have.
I think in this world, I really appreciate when companies come back in the next year and, and don't raise their bids, because we're in an economy of, everybody seems to raise prices all the time, so, so I really appreciate that, company, we need to remember that. Need a motion to approve that bid?
I would make that motion.
Second, the motion, sir.
Okay, we've got a motion, second, thank you, guys, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, passes, we're on to our next one.
So this next one is, this is for a contract renewal for the X-ray equipment that's located in this building and in the Justice Center. And the one that we have in the third building is a totally different company, so just letting you know, it's this building in the Justice Center. It's called Rapid Scan. The Rapid Scan System is a powerful mobile X-ray inspection system for screening in small spaces. The original Rapid Scan equipment was purchased November seventh, 2019, installed on December fourth, 2019. This maintenance agreement will cover the equipment effective January one through January thirty-first of 2025. Again, this is for the two buildings, they did have a three percent increase over last year's costs, and so my recommendation is to renew the contract for Rapid Scan Systems.
Okay, any comment or questions?
Not from me, sir.
I'm just curious, is, do we ever have, I mean, a lot of people, we use it a lot, so, we, do we have any downtime, I mean, is there anything that goes wrong with that thing, or do they...
When I, when I did this contract or renewal, I always asked the department heads and, and our elected officials if they have any issues, or have they, anything that they want me to address with the vendor before we go through this process. The sheriff said they were very happy with this contract, he didn't mention any downtime issues, but I can look into that.
It's just, I'm just curious, I mean, every day, think about how many people go through that, in this building, the other buildings, and, and I've never heard anything, and do they, once, maybe once a year, do they kind of clean it, or check it?
That's what, yeah, preventative maintenance, they do, they do, I, I don't have it right in front of me, but they, I know they do it at least once a year.
Okay, all right, okay, I entertain a motion to approve the maintenance agreement on the X-ray.
Second that motion, sir.
Okay, we've got a motion, and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all righty, I think this is your, is this your last one?
So this is my favorite.
Okay, favorite.
My favorite, because we, we get to get money on items that are no longer needed for the county. So typically what I do is, we do a spring cleaning, a couple of times a year, we'll put out something to the department head, elected officials, and say, if there's anything that you don't need, please let me know, and then we'll put it out, we'll put out an email to the departments, see if anybody can use it throughout the county, and then if not, then we'll go ahead and put it on Gov. Deals. In this case, disposal surplus by statute, the purchasing department manages surplus disposal under the county commission's direction. The Christian County Commission has the authority to sell surplus county property under, and it gives the, the different statutes, by auction or by sealed bids. So, we've used Gov. Deals for many years, I've used Gov. Deals since 2002, when I was with the city of Nashville, so they've been around forever. Gov. Deals is a complete sustainable solution specified, specifically created for and dedicated to government agencies and their surplus disposition. Over fifteen thousand sellers utilize the Gov. Deals online auction platform, and there's over a million registered buyers on this, so the reach is far. Year-to-date, the county has sold twenty-three thousand eleven dollars in Gov. Deals. So what I'm bringing you today is the items that we've sold recently. We sold a printer that was probably ten years old, from the quarter of deeds, we sold that for fifty-four dollars. We sold a ID badge printer that EMA used to use before we got the new system, it was just sitting there, they didn't have a need for it anymore, that brought two hundred dollars. We sold a group of office chairs for the circuit court clerk, they were, they had been used. And we also sold a metal storage cabinet for the county clerk, and that was for sixty dollars. We also sold recently two cars that were originally in the juvenile's authority, and it was a 2014 Dodge Charger, we sold that for five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. We also sold a 2012 Dodge Charger for fifty-nine hundred dollars. I've got one more item that we just recently sold, and it was a, some cartridges, some old HP cartridges, so I'm waiting for the gentleman to pick it up. I don't report that, we don't get our money until he pick it up, so I, I'll report that on my next go-around. So it's just more, just to let you know what we're doing. I did want to talk, do you have any questions about that so far?
No, I just, I'll just tell you, I'm just so proud that, I don't think we used to do this in this county so much, and I really am pleased that if there's things that we can't use, don't want to use, let's sell it, you know?
So now what we have is, there's a couple of other vehicles that I think that we should be putting out, and I'm gonna let you all decide, but there's a, a 2019 Jeep Compass at the Resource Planning Office that's got some issues, and nothing, nothing major, but enough that we probably need to get rid of it. So, that is one that I would like to put on Gov. Deals. There's a 2008 Chevy Impala at the prosecutor's office that they would like to surrender to, for Gov. Deal surplus. There's also your 2014 Jeep Patriot that probably needs to be sold. And then I'm gonna look at another car, but I don't want to bring it up yet, because I don't, I don't know if it's still being in use, so I'll bring that next time, but I, I would suggest that those three cars be put on surplus.
Yeah, very good, and you and I talked about, some of those cars are very, very dirty, and haven't been cleaned or washed or anything for a long time, and we're gonna start a program where all departments need to keep their cars cleaner, and, and you can certainly get more money when you're trying to sell something if it's cleaner, and, and we're gonna do that.
And I would, I would ask if you, again, you tell me if I'm overreaching, but I would ask, I would like to get these three cars some way, somehow detailed, because...
Yeah.
They need to be detailed. I'm a car dealer's daughter, they need to be detailed.
Yeah, we'll get some bids.
So I would get some bids, I'm not talking about hundreds and hundreds of dollars, but like, they need to be run through the car wash, so I can take some pretty pictures, because as you know, you know, pictures, it's a thousand words, so I just want to make sure that we get every dollar we can for these vehicles.
Sure.
So if you're good with that, I will get some quotes and...
Yeah, bring those bids back to us, and we'll talk it over, but I, I think, I think for what you spend, you're gonna get a lot more in return, if the car is, has a cleaner look.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's it.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, good job, I think you were, I think you were busy.
I was busy.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Resource Manager, Mr. Todd.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So what I've got for you this morning is an intergovernmental agreement between the county and the city of Ozark. We've been working on this with the city administrator over there for a little while. As you know, the county's currently marketing for sale, the outlets over at the county government plaza project. In order for us to properly convey ownership to a prospective buyer, we need to have the final plat recorded. Typically, when you do that, in order to record a final plat, the developer needs to first either have all the infrastructure fully constructed and inspected, or have some type of a security agreement, a bond, performance bond, or a letter of credit in place. So what we're doing here is making an agreement with the city of Ozark, that the county guarantees that we are going to go ahead and finish what we're supposed to finish in a written document, and substituting that for having to get a bond, or completely have everything done right away. So that agreement spells out some details specific to the stormwater, the roads, and the water and sewer connections, and also addresses the unique situation that we have with the sewer, that we're gonna have to retain ownership of it until such time as it can switch over to gravity. So, there, there's, you know, some, some details that we've, of course, talked about and negotiated, but putting them on paper is an important thing. It also references and makes clear the county's statutory authority, that we control the development and construction of facilities on county-owned property. The city administrator thought that that would be a good idea, to get that in there, just to answer any questions for anybody about that aspect. So, the city administrator, he intends to present this IGA to his city council first or second week of December, and our hope was that I can forward a signed copy on our end over to them, so that he can present that and get it fully executed. Once that's completed, we'll be able to move forward, get our final plat document finished up, get it recorded, and be in a good position moving forward.
Very good. Any comment or questions concerning this transaction?
No.
Okay, thank you, very, very good work, I would entertain a motion to, to go forward with this.
So move?
Thank you.
Second.
Second, we've got a motion, and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes, so, thank you, we'll get that signed and executed. Next item on the agenda is Ms. Needles.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Couple of months ago, we met to discuss the future of the Garrison Special Road District as it pertains to our sales tax distribution program that we offer every year. Couple of the commissioners had come in at that point from Garrison, shared some information, and I think, we had a good conversation about everything that had happened, and et cetera. So, one of the things that I had mentioned at that meeting was, it would be nice to have the commission's decision on how to move forward before Thanksgiving. Next week is when I send out the applications to the special road districts for 2025, so I guess I just wanted to bring that up again, and if you all had any questions or comments about the previous meeting, or about any of the previous discussions that we've had, or if you need to postpone your decision, or just basically where we stand, so I know how to proceed with the program.
Okay, let me start, and we'll see what the other commissioners, so, so I saw yesterday, you know, how much, how much money that, is that money that, for every one of those different line items, is that money that they have received? The question we had the, the other day, when we had them over, the all three commissioners over here, was, they weren't certain how much they received, they think they haven't received all their monies that's coming to them, and so, Ms. Karen, can, can you help us with that?
Yes, I can. What I sent out to you was exactly what they have received. Now, the last cart, I did check on that today, and that's exactly what they're gonna get. So they will still get another cart payment in December, and they will also have another interest payment, and they'll have their property taxes in December, too.
Whatever they're gonna do.
So, that will probably be a fair amount, because a lot of people are already coming in and paying their taxes and stuff. So they will still have all of that added on to the dollar amount that I sent you yesterday, which I believe was a total of, was it a hundred and twenty-two?
One thirty-three.
Yeah, one thirty-two and a half.
Yeah, so, so that's correct, that money's correct. Is there something?
They're not missing anything other than the sales tax program that they basically were...
Approximately, that sales tax program, approximately, how much is that, would, would they be entitled to?
It, it depends on the request, but any special road district can request up to one hundred, one hundred thousand dollars.
So, so actually, they could have to do it just like some of those other groups that, that did it, we've had other communities, Highlandville...
No, 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 they're a special road district, so, the, the special road districts are part of what's called the sales tax distribution program. We set aside a certain amount, and they can apply for up to one hundred thousand dollars. The municipal, which is Highlandville and Green Hills, is a separate program.
Okay, different, okay, okay, so, but they were restricted, they couldn't do that before?
So, right, because of what we determined was...
The hiccups they had.
A little more than a hiccup, I would think, but yeah, some misuse of tax dollars, yeah.
Well, I think the other commissioners need to weigh in on this.
It's fraud, let's just see what it is.
Yeah, so, so, I'm not opposed to them being able to, to ask for that again, but I, I also would like to hear from the other commissioners. I think we need to put, because we got the same three commissioners now, over there that we had back then, when, when there was issues going on. So I, I would say that if there was any kind of safeguard that we could do, and maybe, I don't know, if we can come up with that safeguard, or, or Mr. Austin can come up with that safeguard, but, but somebody, I'd, I'd kind of like, I'd feel better if we had some kind of safe, I don't want us to spend a whole bunch of time checking on them, I want them to do the right thing, and...
Well, and, and I don't want to put the county in a place either, where it's like, well, the county didn't say anything, so this was, okay, that is not our, our job.
Yeah.
You know, they're their own entity, they have their own jurisdiction over their own roads, you know, by signing that IGA that they signed in the past, they... roads. You know, by signing that IGA that they signed in the past, they, that should have been a guarantee that they were using those funds on public roads. You know, that the, the application that they turned in said that they were going to spend that money on public roads. They referenced that they had 24 miles of roads, which is the amount that they actually do have, if you look at what their cart funds are. So there's some references in there about knowing what should have been done and not, not doing that. So the big thing, again, I want to make sure is, you know, it's, it's not our job to, certainly not our job to babysit. I, since that last meeting, I've tried to help them. I've sent them a couple of grant applications to help. I know they have some bridge issues coming up. I've sent them the list of roads that they receive cart funds for so that they can try to get their road list together and their road maps together. So I think we've been reaching out a little bit, but you know, the, the big thing is, is I, I understand there's, there's the board that didn't do things right, but there's also the folks that live in Garrison that shouldn't have to suffer necessarily because of this. So there's, there's two ways to look at that. But I also think whatever decision is made should not put any more of a burden on the county or county staff to watch what they do. So that's one of the big asks that I have for you guys moving forward.
Okay. And Ms. Karen?
Well, I wasn't down here for that meeting, but I did go back and listen to it. I was gone that day, I think, and so I did go back and listen to that meeting. You know, and they're complaining that they don't have enough money to do their roads. Here's my thing. If you would have used your money correctly, you would have had plenty of money to do your roads instead of doing your personal driveways. So that's not the county's fault that they don't have the money to do their roads. I mean, that's their own fault that they didn't use their money the way that it was supposed to be used. So I don't feel like it's proper that they come back and whine into the county and complaining, you know, that they don't have X amount of dollars to, to keep their roads up. That was their responsibility. I mean, they're three grown men, and you should have taken care of the roads that you were voted to take care of instead of paving your personal driveways and granny and Papa and me off driveways. That's the way I see it. I mean, yeah, I want them to be able to keep their roads up, but I also think there needs to be accountability because, you know, they did not do what they were supposed to do. And they've gotten every penny. I'm, you know, that kind of offends me that they say that they haven't gotten all their money. And yes, they did get a check for $4. They did get a check for $5 or something. But that's because it's toward the end of the year when the property taxes are coming in. And so, like I said, this next time, they're going to get quite a bit more because in December and January is when they're going to get their two biggest lump sums for the year. All of the road districts, all of our entities, fire departments, all of those things, they get the majority of their money in December and January is when they get it. So, I mean, it's 133,000, and they're probably going to get another about 5,000 more. So you're talking about almost 70,000 a year that they had to spend on their 24 miles of road.
So when was the last time, as far as we know, when was the last time that it was documented that they misused their funds? When was it?
2019. Now that
2001?
2019. So this became an issue with the county in early 2020. Past that point, what they did with their funds, we did not check on them.
True.
So I can't say. But documented and in possession here at the county is 2019.
Right. So I agree that, that had they done back then what they should have done, they would have had funds. But I don't, I personally don't think we can, in essence, hold them, hold them in hostage, hold that against them forever. I mean, I think there's going to come a day that we say, okay, we're going to have to, we're going to have to resume what we do with all the other special road districts. Do I think that they might do the same thing again? They would have to be, they would have to be on something fairly strong, I think, to do that, you know? So I don't personally. But the bottom line is, I don't think we can continue to withhold sales tax money from Garrison Road District because of something that happened five, six years ago, documented. It may have happened before that, but we're talking documented. So that's my, that's my thought.
It's a, it's an interesting question, position that we're in. And, and one of the questions that I had, they have 24 miles of road, we're showing 133,495 dollars, basically, roughly, of revenue, which equates out to $5,562 per mile. Where is that in comparison? I know I'm throwing you a question.
We have about 3,000 per mile.
We, we average about $3,000 per mile in common one, common two?
C1 and C2. C1 has
So they, they have more revenue per mile than the rest of the road? And that's not
But a lot of the specials do.
That's not their, that's not their fault.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just the way the system is set up. And it's that, I agree with Commissioner Blue's assessment that we can't continue to hold them hostage or penalize them, because at any given time, the road district could dissolve, and it could become our roads, and we wouldn't have that extra assessment that's tacked on there to help take care of those roads. And that's not necessarily a position we want to be in. And the citizens that live on those roads are county residents, and we're, we're sworn to uphold and protect them, just like we would anybody else. At the same time, we have three members of a commission that, whether they intended to or not perpetrate a fraud upon the county. Unfortunately, no restitution has come from that, that anybody that received preferential treatment, which I think basically from their own assessment, everybody got a private driveway, paid basically inside the district. So it's tough. I, I'm not prepared to send them any money. I'm, I am prepared to reimburse them for a project that's approved. That, that would be my opinion. You bid out a specific project, we know what the dollar amount is. You get the project complete, we'll reimburse it or we'll cut the, the check for it. I, I would be prepared for that because I, I still don't quite trust, openly trust, just to send a, a, a check unknowingly. And I hate to say that. Commissioner Blue's right. Once you get caught doing something, you're a little bit less likely to do it again. And I'm not saying that they specifically meant to, but anybody with any experience should know that you don't pay private properties, driveways with public funds. That's pretty, I think most people would understand that that's not something you should do. So at the same time, I'm not wanting to call them criminal or make, or say they intentionally committed criminal activity, that they should have known that that is not something they should have done. And had they not done that, they wouldn't have, I mean, the explanation that was given was, we were allocated so much money this year, we were afraid if we didn't spend it, we wouldn't get it next year. Well, had they been preparing for a project and, and holding that back as a reserve fund for a project, we wouldn't be in this position. So spending it, as the famous way governments work, I mean, I spent time in the United States Army, and our budget every single year was based off last year's expenditures. So we made sure we spent every single penny that we had, so we'd get the same amount next year. Well, that causes problems. And that, that doesn't, it's not a good use of taxpayer funds to just spend it to spend.
Well, and in the IGA that existed from, I think, either 2012 or 2013 on, when that, that original change was made, where they had to actually apply for a project, that says you are awarded this amount if it, there's a clause in there that says if you happen to, if your project happens to come in under budget, you can keep those funds, you just have to use them in the right of way. So you can use them for tree trimming, you can use them for a new culvert, you can use them for whatever. So it wasn't one of those situations where they had to give money back and then were in trouble, would be in fear of not receiving the same amount next year. You were awarded that, it just, it just had to be used for that project plus anything else in the right of way.
So really, right now, I mean, up until right now, they've not been able to apply for money out of that $100,000.
Correct.
So, so, but if, if they did, it would be project related, correct?
Yes.
We're not doing, we're not going to just take $33,000 and send it to them and say, have fun?
No, they have to apply for a specific project and give details of that project.
Okay. And do they submit receipts or something after they've done that project, or do you know?
Yes. So they'll submit copies of the canceled checks, they'll submit the invoices and quotes from the contractor.
So we do have that level of, of accountability?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Could we, could we add another level to that? Keep that process the way you've got it. And if the other two commissioners would want to have it come to a commission meeting, and we are the final say, using you as the consultant, I don't want to do, like you say, I don't want to do a whole bunch of extra work for something that we expect people to do the right thing to begin with. But we've already gone down the road where we saw that they didn't do the right thing. And it was a lot of money. And so I don't want to waste our taxpayers' money on another problem that they create. And we got the same three people. But I don't think you can punish them forever. So I, I would be for spending the time to have them come to us each time. We get all the stuff that we're supposed to do, and we have one extra level. You're going to come and explain to us what, what you're doing. And the commissioners are going to decide whether that's, that's needed or not. Is that something that, that we can do or not?
I think we could do. But a couple of things is, I don't think any of the three of us are going to be able to look at what they were doing and say, oh yeah, we think this was a good project.
Well, they'll use hers as a consultant to okay it.
I know it. But I, I'm just saying, I think the extra step of taking up commission time to do what she's already either approved or disapproved. And, and plus, I would, I would be, as much as we can, we ought to be able to treat all of our special road districts the same.
Same.
So if we're going to require Garrison to come in before us and after they've done the other things, then we require them all. Well, that kind of punishes everybody else that's doing it well, because one group at one point in the past did it not so well. Again, I'm fine with whatever you gentlemen decide.
You will see, so March-ish of every year is when I bring in what everyone has applied for and what I recommend awarding them.
So it does come before, so that
It will come before you. It's just, it's proposed through me. None of the specials are here. But I will be able to tell you which project each of the specials has proposed, the details of that, the score of that, and what I recommend awarding them for that year. And that will come before you.
So do you think that because of their actions, any of their roads are in a greater disrepair that now is going to cause them to, to need this money?
Yes.
So that, that comes back as a, as a, kind of a curve ball there?
It is.
Because you went and paved all these driveways, your, your budget has suffered, which means your productivity has suffered, and now you need us to come help you again. It all revolves back around the fact that a fraud took place.
Yeah.
And preferential treatment was given to people by paving their private properties. And again, I don't want to hold my citizens, my constituents hostage and let the roads get any further deteriorated. But I can't believe somebody hasn't filed a lawsuit against them for, for what happened.
Well, and, and also, like I mentioned, I see both sides of this. I see your average resident in Garrison who needs assistance, right? Like, we've heard from these folks that their roads haven't, they need to be taken care of. And whether it's from the special or a contractor, they've been told, we don't have the money. I also see the part where public tax dollars were misused. But, you know, the, the thing I want to point out, no matter which way this goes, you know, none of this is going to be a win 100%, right? Whatever decision is made. But whichever way this goes, these funds that we give the specials through this program are not required of us to get, this is essentially a grant program. They are, in theory, and by statute, are supposed to be run off of the assessments that they collect. I mean, that's why they collect that extra property tax assessment. And when you don't have enough, you put it on the ballot, and you increase your levy and you collect more. And that's what those are special did a couple of years ago, right? So I don't think, you know, it's been great for however many years that specials and a while ago, the cities were getting these extra funds from the county. And it helped. And I think a lot of really great projects have been done, and they continue to be done. But we're not taking anything away from them that they are, that they were set up with, I guess is my point. So
Yeah. They're not, they're not due these funds.
Right. We're not holding sales tax that they're entitled to because we're angry about something. We're, this is a grant program. So
It could be true that it'd be good to take a five-year look at this and maybe phase this out. You know, I mean, give them plenty of time to adjust to the reality that's coming. But I mean, there's, there are roads that are not in special road districts that are definitely in need. And the long-term goal there would be to do this, 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 and this, which if we had that money that's been going to the special road districts, we could accelerate some of those projects to the rest of the citizenry at that point. My, I would never recommend that we do that without ample notice for them to begin to adjust their, their thinking, their budgeting, to know it's coming. And it wouldn't have to be all gone, but I'm just saying, the whole thing may need to be looked at when you see 24 miles of road and they're getting $55,000 a mile or something that they have available to them compared to the rest of the county and so forth. And I know that's, that comes from their own assessment on their people, I guess, maybe. So, so, but
And I think that's a great idea. It's something I've thought about. I've also thought that we could establish something similar to what we do for the cities now. You could still have a certain amount of funding put aside. And so when the specials do have an actual need, they have a washout. They have something they don't have enough funds to repair themselves. We can assist in that nature. And we're not just helping them perform regular maintenance anymore. Like, we're helping them perform regular maintenance when we can't do regular maintenance ourselves. It's kind of a hard seat to sit in.
I think you've done great. And I think, I think continue to look at how that might be adjusted. And I think one of the keys, of course, is that we, we continue to teach people, this money is not theirs by right.
Yeah.
This money is administered like grant money. You said that, and I like that concept.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Todd?
In this, in this circumstances, is there a way to perhaps adopt a proportionary maximum amount that they could apply for for a period of years as sort of a penalty, but also assist them from getting caught up on what they need? Just an idea.
And how long have they been unable to access that fund?
So 2020, which means the first time they didn't get funds was 2021.
2021, 2022, 2023, 2024. So
Four, four years.
Four years on this.
It would allow them to demonstrate compliance over a period of time, hopefully.
True. But again, this is not theirs by right, but it's by
It's true.
By a show of a need. And I mean, and maybe they do have a need. I still, I still think that if we're going to continue the program, they should be allowed to participate, but we may have to be a little more cautious and, and maybe even have a couple of tighter regulations with regards to them based off past behaviors. But I mean, we, we have a highly skilled, paid, highly administrator that I think can handle that without having to bring everything back to us for review.
And do you, are you at the point that you have a recommendation for us? I mean, I know you try to leave that decision to us, but we look to you as our experts. So, and I understand what Todd said. I mean, we could, for example, you could, for example, extend that if it's been four years and say, we're going to extend it for one more year. Or you could say, for, for this next year, you can apply up to 50,000, or everybody else can apply up to 1,000, not to 100,000, et cetera. And then, then give them a clean start on, in 2026. I don't know. Do you have any recommendation, Ms. Miranda?
Oh, man.
Oh, man. Again, I fight so hard because any other grant program that we, that I have applied for from the highway department, if I misuse those funds, it's never again, right? So, but I also, you know, I know what some of those roads in Garrison look like, and I know people who had nothing to do with it live on those roads and drive on those roads. You know, I think, and I, it's not really part of the agenda today, but I don't mind to pick this back up, knowing that we're gonna possibly phase the program out, like, over the next four or five years.
I would be interested, not to catch off, I apologize, but where their levy sets in comparison to other road districts' levies, they have, they do, you mentioned this earlier, they have the opportunity to raise their levy if they feel that they're not being taken care of properly. Now, I would, I would assume that the citizens of Garrison should be angry at their own commissioners, road district commissioners, because of their actions caused them to be in this position. And sometimes people have to be punished. And you're right. If you're, if you participate in a federal grant program and you do something wrong, you're never, ever going to have an opportunity. You'll get a letter that says, "Do not ever apply again," you know?
Yeah.
You're done. So...
The interesting, the interesting thing, the two years that I served as Eastern, now I ask you, Commissioner, did you ever, have you had a call from neighbors out there on that road district? I never had...
I've never received a phone call from Garrison Special.
I haven't either, and that's another strange thing that we...
I get a lot from Common One, and I drove Common One yesterday to check on a situation.
Yeah.
I've got a lot of road miles that need attention.
Yeah.
In Common One.
And I wouldn't, and just, and what Commissioner Blue said, and you and I have talked about it, you and I have talked about it too. I wouldn't be opposed to sitting down and deciding how to phase that out. Maybe, like you said, 20%, 25% of the time over four to five years. That way, no one's surprised when it's over with. Maybe then we have some kind of program that if something major happens, then we can still help them. I think that'd even, because as our sales tax keeps declining, and that's our major function of our budget is sales tax, we're gonna have a problem providing services in the future if we don't do something. And so, I think that's something that we have to make a decision this next year. We've got to make a decision of how we're going to maintain the budget that we need to maintain and provide the services as we continue to grow.
Yeah. And the levy question, I think that would, would be good. I'm sorry, I didn't bring that in. But I do know there's specials that have more dollars per mile than Garrison.
Stone Shine has the most that I can remember.
So, almost, almost, actually, I believe every special has more dollars per mile than the counties.
Every special road district has more money than Common One and Common Two.
Yeah. And, you know, we do have a lot of miles. So, it is an issue, but I guess I wouldn't wanna, based on the levy, not give Garrison anything, because I know there's others that have, the levies produce more dollars per mile, and we would be giving them funds.
Well, you're not gonna, you're not gonna accept, work with those, deal with those applications until March, right?
Well, I send the packet out typically next week, and then they have until December 31st to turn those in. And then we start evaluating and working through the IGA process.
And you haven't sent them an application in the last four years?
No. No, not Garrison.
Well, I guess the real question is, is do we wanna send the application out, and we'll see what they are gonna come back with, and then we need to figure out whether we're gonna...
We can do that.
I don't even know if we have to do it today or not. Let's just wait and see what they, what they, let's go ahead and send, I mean, we can vote on that, I mean, but maybe send them an application, and then let's see, let's see where we go.
The application is not the guarantee of funding, so I can send the application.
So, they don't know. So, I don't think it hurts to send an application to them, and we still have to make some, some pretty tough decisions.
Yeah. So, we'll see.
Not just on that special road district, but all road districts. I'm okay, ready to, to start weaning everybody off.
I can, I can send the application, and meantime, work up a presentation about that, and try to meet with you all about that before the end of the year.
I think that's a, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
And we probably acted as a commission to start withholding their right to apply for those funds. Am I correct?
Yes.
So, you probably, we probably do need a motion a second today if we're gonna send out an application, even if we denied it, we're, we're changing course in doing that. Am I correct?
Um, excuse me, I'm not, I cannot recall if the motion was made to not send them an application, or just they weren't eligible.
Well, I think we could, I think we, I think you're right. I think we could entertain a motion to send out an application. We're not saying whether they're, we feel like they're eligible or not eligible, because she's gonna decide at the time that she receives those applications whether, whether that applicant, that application should be qualified or not. So, we could still make a motion and pass it, if you want to, for them to go ahead and have it on the record that we're sending out an application. That's as much good faith as we, I think we can do today, and then we'll see, then we'll see what happens after then. Would that be okay?
Yeah, I mean, that would be fine with me. I'm not sure about the Western Commissioner, but I mean, I would make a motion to allow Garrison to apply for funding.
Like all...
Just like the rest of the road districts, with no guarantees that any road district would be funded for any project through the process.
Go ahead.
Say that motion one more time with Miranda hearing it.
The motion that I made was to allow Garrison Special Road District to apply for funding with no guarantees, because there's no guarantees that any special road district would receive funding for projects submitted.
Yeah. So, I think I'd...
I second that motion, sir.
Okay, good. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And pass it. So, I think that's where we are today. And I think that's, I think that's, after a long discussion, I think, I think that's a good, good thing. Okay, last thing on the agenda, and we can quickly get this over with. We've got communications. I've got a couple of communication, we'll see if anybody else does.
Point of view.
Oh, sorry.
Do you have public defender lease?
Oh, no, no, we gotta get that done. I promise. So, where's that at? Sorry. I thought we had, I thought we were done. No, no, we have a very important lease agreement that we need to get done today, and then get that amount set up to our, because this is a 2025 expense, we've estimated it. This, this is the public defender's lease, and we, we had a 10-year lease that was renewable each year. It has expired at the end of this year. Green County, Tany County, and Christian County. And this is leased with the Hake Brothers, their construction company, older construction company in Springfield, Missouri. They have a building that's a fairly good-sized building, and we are continuing to lease from them. Christian, Green County has a county administrator, and so I've been working with him. And so, our part of that lease is not much more than what it, what it was last year. We're paying based on population, and they have our population as 80, as 88,000. And our part of it is about 2,300 a month. I can't, and then Green County's is considerably more, and then Tany County is a little bit less than us.
Yeah. Our annual cost, 28,528.56.
Yeah.
Compared to Green County's 95, almost 96,000.
All right. Now, the only thing they asked me to do is, if we would sign, Ms. Maddie, if we would sign one sheet, just our signatures, Tany County's doing theirs next week, and then Green County, I don't know when they're, but if we just had the signature sheet, then Green County's gonna send us back a copy with everybody's signed contract.
And is Austin already?
Austin did approve this, because he worked with Green, he's Green County's attorney of roads.
I assume so.
So, it's all okay. Everything's okay. We did make, it is going up a little bit, but it's not going up what they wanted. And so, I think we need to go ahead and approve this lease.
I would make the motion that we do so, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. Now, we'll do announcements real quick. Thanks, Maddie, for reminding me of that, because that was something I promised that we would get done. For Commissioner Jackson and I, we have an annual MAC meeting, Missouri Association of Counties, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. I'll be going up there on Saturday, have a meeting Saturday night. The two of us will be gone through Tuesday. We have Wednesday as a day that we're open, and then Thanksgiving is Thursday, and we're off Friday. So, Thursday and Friday, we are off. And the governor has given Friday off to all state and lowings, in addition to Thursday. Okay. So, the next thing is, I just, we did get five applications for the library board position over at Nixon, so that's a good, good number. And we will start those applications. Commissioner Jackson, when did we decide to do those applications? Do you remember?
Interviews?
The interviews, I don't know that we can pick the date yet. I'm sorry.
All right. I think, Ms. Kim...
Did you email out the date?
No, I emailed it yesterday. Let me go get my planner, and I can tell you.
Okay. Well, whatever. We're gonna try to pick a date where we can do all five interviews in one day, hopefully starting in the morning and getting done before lunch or around lunch. If we're late for lunch, that's fine. But we're trying to get all five of them done. So, so, okay. And I don't have my phones in here, so I don't know what she sent. It was an okay day for me. I don't know for the rest of you guys. But she did send it out yesterday.
She had asked if Tuesday the third would work, and I said, "Okay." But I think she has not yet contacted the interviewees.
Yeah, that date, that date should work.
Okay.
For me.
Okay. So, if that date works for all three of us, then I would say that Ms. Kim needs to start calling people and putting them in a time slot. And we'll get all five applications done in one, one day.
If possible.
If possible, and they'll be interviewing. If that person's out of town, we'll have to make some type of an exception. If we can get four done, and one person's out of town or sick that day, we'll have to get it done as quickly as we can. We'll continue to stay on this schedule.
Yeah.
So, they can onboard someone before the end of the year. Okay?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Any other, any other announcements, or?
Just one, one question. I'd like to see as time is running out, and it tends to do this, is there, would anyone have an objection to going back to 9:00 AM commission meetings? As starting at 10:00, we tend to run in, and I end up having some conflicts with other meetings that I have. That makes it a very tight window. Like, today, normally, I would be OTO, and it would be very hard for me to get from here at 11:30 to a noon OTO meeting. I'm not going today. Commissioner Morris was going. But I've got a different meeting today that I'm going to that starts in six minutes, and I'm gonna be late. So, I would like to go back to 9:00 AM as our, our commission time, if that's an option.
I, I think that's okay. I mean, we, we've gone back and forth. We do that in a way on, December 4th, is that our next commission meeting, first one in, in, in December, is that?
The 5th.
Uh?
The 5th.
5th, December 5th is our first one in December. And that will be a 9:00 AM meeting because we have a 10 o'clock zoning meeting. So, so that is 9:00. So, so we probably can switch back to 9:00. I'll work with Ms. Maddie on that, and I don't see a problem. It's not taken me near as long to get dressed as it did. I probably cut it from 45 minutes down to 20 minutes. So, so...
Progress, progress.
So, I'm making progress. Okay.
But I think, I think it's a good idea if we can.
Yeah.
But I think your, I think your need there is important, so we need to wait a while.
Okay.
But I know I have a meeting on that, on that 5th. I have 11:45 in Springfield, which is generally perfectly fine. Sometimes we have five-minute meetings, don't we?
Right. Sometimes we do.
Yeah. But, but when we hit something like this, it presses us. And of course, we could always go to 9:30 instead of 9:00, if anybody felt like that would help a little, a little bit on the time.
Yeah. Okay.
But 9:00 may, 9:00 may be more easily remembered.
Yeah. The only other thing I had was, just for anybody that happens to be watching, we changed up our process a little bit, removing, or moving all of the agenda processes back up to the clerk's office where traditionally it would be. They've exceeded my expectations. No paper packet here this morning in front of me, just an agenda. I wasn't expecting to be ready for that, but I'm happy. That's why I've been staring at my phone all morning, because I don't have a laptop down here in front of me, which I'll fix that next week. But all of the packet information, so for the citizens that are out there, I don't know which camera to look at, but for the citizens that are out there, everything that we review now, the citizens have an opportunity to look at in advance of our meetings as well. So, I think that transparency piece is huge. That we're to that point. It's something I've been wanting to do for quite some time. The clerk's office has got it up and running, so thank you for that.
Yes. And I'm highly appreciative of the fact we did have the agenda on there too, but that everything was in the right order, and it's all in one document, so I just kept scrolling. I didn't have to slip back and forth between things and so forth. So, well done.
Which will save the taxpayers some money and a few trees in the process. Less paper.
Yeah. So, actually, amazing, amazing. So, thank, thank you all, because there are 114 counties in this state, and there's not that many counties that have this type of transparency that we continue to improve on.